Good evening. If I can have everyone's attention, if you would please be seated. Good evening, welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM Tuesday, June 20th, 23 meeting. We're going to begin our meeting, as always, with the invocation from Pastor Leonard Hayes from the Henry County Fire Rescue, and then he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
Well, good evening, let's pray together. Father, Lord, we thank you for your blessings upon this day. And Lord, as we meet tonight to govern, I ask, Lord, that things would be done decently in an order, that as things are presented, and with your hand and blessing upon them, they move forward speedily. And Lord, I thank you tonight for the special guests that were here, those that have worked, and, Lord, to maybe receive recognition for that, we pray your blessing on them and their families. So, Lord, meet with us in this meeting. Again, we ask you to continually bless our great county. We're grateful for all your doing, and we pray for safety for all those laboring in this vineyard daily. So blessed tonight in this meeting, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call, officially call our meeting to order. I have a few announcements. The following planning and zoning items were advertised for June 20th, 2023 Board of Commissioner meeting, but have been removed by staff. ULDC Amendment 23-07, an ordinance by Henry County, Georgia, to amend multiple sections of the Unified Land Development Code of Henry County. Then HC-Cod Amendment 2301, an ordinance by Henry County to amend multiple sections of the Henry County Code of Ordinances. These items have been removed, and they will be placed on the next agenda. Next, we will have our presentation. Also, we're removing two items that may, that will be placed on the next agenda, Stormwater Resolution rescinding current Spalding County inmate work detail agreement. That particular item is being removed. And then the County Attorney Resolution approving the agreement with the Henry County Development Authority regarding mighty hero homes projects. Both of those items are being removed as well from the agenda, so if anyone is here for those items, you can be dismissed. Next, we will begin with the presentation from Parks and Recreation Special Olympics. The presenter is Donna Holder, Assistant Director.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am Donna Holder, Assistant Director with Henry County Parks Recreation Department, along with Ms. Terri Nash, our therapeutic recreation coordinator. We would like to show you some pictures and highlights from our weekend competition featuring our athletes. We are here today to recognize our outstanding Special Olympic athletes that competed in the state Special Olympic Summer Games held recently at Emory University on May 19th through the 21st. We had 56 athletes from Henry County that competed. We received gold medals in each of the following sports, aquatics, athletics, cheerleading, tennis, and volleyball. Their medal count was high this year. They received 21 gold medals, eight silver medals, 14 bronze, and eight fourth-place medals. We are Henry cares and Henry committed. We are so proud of our athletes. We couldn't do it without the support of our community and our staff. This would not be possible without the dedicated support of our eight coaches, sponsors, bus drivers, 20 volunteers, and parents. And we would like to let Terri Nash have a word.
Good evening, thank you so much for having us today. As Donna said, we could not continue this program or even have the program without our awesome volunteers and our parents that help us throughout the year, and also the community that supports our program, supports Special Olympics. And without the support of the Board of Commissioners and Henry County, we would not have an outstanding program. I am biased. This is the first time in 17 years I've been up here, so I might stay a little while. But anyway, we have, I have a great staff, and we love what we do, so we're going to continue to do what we do for as long as we can. But we're not here for that today, but we are here for some very special folks in the corner here, and so I would like for those athletes to come up with the volunteers and parents, and we would get a picture with y'all. But thanks again for allowing us to have this program.
Well, again, congratulations to our Special Olympics Award winners and their participation in those games. Next item on the agenda is the reappointment to the Department of Family and Children's Services Board, Dr. Monica McIntyre-Herring. The term would run from 6:30 of 2023 to 6:30 of 2028. I'd like to call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. If our county manager, Sherri Matthews, will come forward and read our consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, June 20th at 6:30 PM. Under capital projects, we have a resolution approving a contract with Prime Contractors, Inc., for the Superior Courthouse Edition Window Repair and Replacement through Sourcewell EZIQC Contract Number GA-ST02-040820-PCI in the amount of $1,073,780, utilizing capital improvement plan funds. Under courts, we have a resolution approving the Judicial Council of Georgia ARPA funds in the amount of $1,370,631 for modernization of courtroom technology equipment with no local match. Under the county attorney, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners setting the qualifying fee for elected county office for special election 2023. We also have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 3,787 square feet of right-of-way, 2,118 square feet of permanent easement, 1,732 square feet of temporary easement, and 413 square feet of driveway easement by negotiated contract or condemnation for property along Airline Road at McGarrettie Road, parcel number three. Under the Emergency Management Agency, we have a resolution accepting the Emergency Management Performance Grant for 2022 in the amount of $45,000 from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency with an in-kind labor match. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the approval of a memorandum of understanding to allow the Stockbridge Police Department's sworn personnel access to the Henry County Police Safety Training Complex for an annual maintenance fee of $6,000. Under Leisure Services, Extension Services, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners requesting approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Board of Regents regarding cooperative extension. Under Planning and Zoning, we have a resolution authorizing a request for a new streetlight district for Southern Hills Phases 1A and 1B on Walker Drive located in District 5. Under Risk Management, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners accepting a grant from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, ACCG, in the amount of $8,500 for the Henry County Risk and Safety Management Department. And under Senior Services, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the aging subcontract with the Atlanta Regional Commission for fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $831,955, with a local match of $68,229, totaling $900,185. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Thank you, County Manager. I had a question with regards to the streetlight district. Who's putting those, who will be paying to put those in, or will the, will that be picked up by the community, the subdivision?
So, Central Georgia EMC will install the lights, and then the county pays the upfront cost, and then we reassess it on the property owner's tax bill annually.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from any of the other commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Thomas.
Under County Attorney, Letter A, have the dates and the amounts been set and published for the special election?
I will defer to the county attorney.
Thank you.
The amount has been set, that's what this resolution does. The date has not been set by the Board of Election, and they plan to vote on that at their next meeting in July.
Thank you. The next question I have is under Leisure Services, Letter A, Extension Services, are there any dollars involved in this, or it's just a resolution for memorandum of working together? What is that?
So, this is our annual contract with Extension Services, where we do pay a portion of the salaries for some of the staff members that are actually employed through the state of Georgia, through the University of Georgia. So, this is an annual contract. We did make some modifications to the contract, Commissioner, regarding increases to their salary, just to ensure that those employees, since they are not county employees, they are not subject to the same increases that our county employees would have received. But it is for money.
But this is not for county employees, that's what I want to point out.
That is correct.
So, just like a supplement that we're paying them.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Harrell.
Any other questions from any other members of the board? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Those that oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
County Attorney, County Manager, Resolution approving intergovernmental agreement with the Henry County Development Authority to convey property for the purpose of attracting a data center to Henry County.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. I'm actually going to turn this over to the Executive Director for the Development Authority and their attorney, Mr. Rod Meadows. So Josh Finn and Rod Meadows will actually be making this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, good to be before you again. Josh Finn, Executive Director, Henry County Development Authority. Rod Meadows, our legal counsel, is here, drafted the IGA, and that was before you tonight. Also with us is our Chair, Irv Culpepper, and Vice Chair, Eddie Osman, and the audience. Tonight, this IGA is an extension of work and discussions that we have had with the Board of Commissioners over a number of years regarding diversification of our economy. As we talked about previously at y'all's board retreat, a desire to get higher-tech jobs into the community, and some of the work that we have done in wide data centers, and I'll talk about the terms of the IGA as well, too. Again, purpose of this is that request of the Board of Commissioners and the Development Authority Board, our staff was instructed to identify real estate options in order to attract data centers in other technology-supported industries. So what are data centers? Basically, data centers are commercial buildings used for purposes of housing services to store and process data and information. On the screen there, you see a few examples. On the top left, that is the Switch Data Center Campus in Liffey Springs, Douglas County. To the right is a data center in Northern Virginia. On the bottom left is an inside of a data center, and actually to the right, they can take all types and shapes and forms. That's the American Cancer Society Headquarters Building in downtown Atlanta by Centennial Park, and about half of that building is a data center, believe it or not. So, it's office and data center, so it can be stored in a variety of areas. So why data centers? One of the things that we look at, and we've talked about extensively, is the tax-digested investment that's coming in as we work as a development authority to bring that in. Data centers are very high investment, and I'll get into that in just a minute, due to the specialization of the building and equipment, so they have a high real and personal property tax value when they come into a community. This is the good part, low transportation impact. So basically, the only trucks you're dealing with is during the construction phase, like any other commercial building, that could be an office building, a medical building, a hospital, same thing. Otherwise, you're dealing with just daily traffic that is coming in for employees to come in and out. And we'll talk about those job counts as well, too. Stronger power and fiber infrastructure, power companies and the telecommunications companies around data centers as they cluster and develop, put in more investment in that infrastructure, and that benefits the neighboring areas as well, too. Higher internet speeds, more redundancy, more reliability within the grid in that part. And talk about the pay, as I put over there, just based on averages in the market right now for Metro Atlanta, you're looking anywhere from $30 an hour, which is slightly above on the bottom end, what we're seeing in manufacturing, and that number has gone up over the last few years, and 70% ahead of national average in the Atlanta market. Project manager, which is the mid-management, 68, so those data center technicians who go upskill through Technical College or one of our university partners, will continue to have a good pathway up in the payways. So I talked about jobs and investment for a minute, but here's a few recent examples of counties that are comparable to us. I mentioned the Switch Data Center Campus in Douglas County, is a $2.5 billion investment, but that has only brought in 100 jobs that's there. So, they don't require a lot of employees over there to maintain and manage, so that's where the low traffic impact comes in. Meta, our Facebook, over in Newton County, 750 jobs, $3 billion, but they project about $42 billion. I wanted to use that as an example. So, the server switch out with technology on a consistent basis as they come in, so they were constantly every few years replacing that. When that equipment comes in, it comes in at a higher value, and based on personal property tax depreciation schedules, we'll get more bang for our buck in the long run as they continue to do business in Henry County if we are successful in our efforts. And then more recently, QTS in Fayette County, 100 jobs and $1 billion in investment, and I put, you know, various acreage size on how they make it work. So we did a lot of research, worked with our partners at George Power Economic Development, the Georgia Partner Economic Development, Electric Cities of Georgia, Georgia EMC, their economic development shops, also with our planning and zoning departments that are here, working with Tucson and his team, obviously, and incorporated, understanding what zoning codes that we have to use to identify where those potential areas are. Some of our research factors, proximity to necessary infrastructure, zoning uses, which I just mentioned, business climate, not just a good business climate, but who are your partners? Who are your partners in permitting from Economic Development Agency, et cetera? What are those hurdles? Speed of market is very critical, so we factor a lot of that into some of the targets that we were looking at. So while we were researching, we identified the piece of property that is up before you today. This is about 180 acres, that's excess airport property. We've had extension discussions when we identified this, we brought this to the county manager and her team to start taking a look at and see if this was a possibility in that, but this is 100, about 180 plus or minus a few acres, once the boundary survey is completed in that, that we have identified that is not being used, that has been sitting in Henry County's possession since the acquisition of Atlanta Speedway Airport over there. But we did identify it, it did meet metrics, we ran it through with our economic development partners in Atlanta at the state to take a look at it, see if it made sense, but also some experts we have in the site selection community who represent the data center clients to take a look at this and see if it could be viable, and it met a lot of the metrics that are out there. So it is in county possession. What this IGA does, it would move the property over to the Development Authority, which we can use our toolbox to help attract the type of data center that we would like to get and get that first one in. We feel once we get that first one in, we prove Henry County is a viable market. This is similar, a great example of that is Douglas County. They have had a significant boom in the data center market, but they had to work hard to get that first one in, to prove that is a viable area. In the IGA, I want to say this very clearly, we can only use it to attract a data center, a data center developer to come in. That's it. Now let's say during the terms of IGA, you know, I don't know, named a movie, famous movie studio comes in and says, hey, we're interested in Henry County, the property's still available, we'd have to come back to the commission to ask for permission for that use, or anything else of that. So this defines the terms that's out there, is very straightforward to the Development Authority. It does set a minimum on price per acre at $30,000, that's based on some recent transactions of similar property in the area, and factoring in other market conditions. So, let's say we're successful and we sell the property within that, what do we do with the funds? Well, minus any expenses that we have to take, i.e. boundary survey and a few other things that have to be approved by the county manager before those funds are expended, those funds would come back to the county. So that would put money, money back in for y'all to use to address needs wherever y'all see in that area. We also have put a clock on it for us, this will be two years upon its transference of the property. If this IGA is approved tonight, it will probably take us about 30 to 45 days, once the boundary survey is done, for the county attorney and our attorney to transfer the property over and get that completed, but we would have two years to get the job, you know, get it moving to a certain direction. If we don't, y'all can take, we'd have to convey the property back at the Board of Commissioners' request, or y'all can extend our IGA for a certain time period as well. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
No questions, but definitely some comments about what you're proposing. We have charged you and others with bringing a variety of jobs to the area, and you're saying this will be high-tech jobs that we can attract now to Henry County, correct?
We have an asset that can help us attract that, yes.
Okay, and are you also in conversation with our local technical college to make sure that the workforce to be prepared, the local workforce will be prepared to take advantage of those jobs?
Yes, ma'am, and actually, the great news is with QTS going into Fayette County, we're in the same service territory with Fayette, with Southern Crescent Technical College. So we've got a very strong connection on that, they're already working towards to build those programs up or enhance those programs, and I think as we get those industries in, the state will put more resources into expanding that program for the partnerships that are there. I can tell you, our manager of established industry, Sharon Hill, has done an outstanding job of making sure that connection with our education partners is strong. We hired, and Dr. Clark forgave us for hiring her away from Southern Crescent, so, but she has done a tremendous job of working to connect our industries and our technical colleges and universities to understand the needs of what's needed in the future with those programs and help develop those programs, but also as well, too, for those institutions to offer specialized curriculum at a contract with the employer as well, too.
And thank you so much for the work you're doing with this, because, you know, one of the things we are hearing all the time that Henry County need more of a variety of jobs so that 80% plus of our population would not have to leave us to go work in other areas, and you're helping us correct that, so thank you for your work, and I think this is an awesome project, and look forward to it being completed.
Thank you, Commissioner. Looking forward to the groundbreaking soon.
Commissioner Robinson?
I do have a comment. Just want to say that I've worked with you in the past, and I just, Mr. Meadows, I just know that he had the vision, Henry jobs for Henry residents. So I'm fully excited about this, because I know the vision has been long overdue for that, so if we can stay in line with that, and I know if you two are at the helm of it, that we're in the right direction. So thank you so much.
Congratulations to you for joining our commissioners, and we're looking forward to working with you as we have with the rest of the commissioners. And I might say that the county attorney has been working with me on the intergovernmental agreement, and it's been a pleasure to work with her as well.
Commissioner Angler?
Motion to approve.
We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion, Commissioner Wilson or Commissioner Lewis?
No, just a comment. And my comment is in line with Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Robinson. This is exactly what the citizens of Henry County have been asking for. We receive a lot of information, feedback, no more warehouses. This is, this is the alternative, this is what we're trying to attract. We're trying to attract high-paying jobs that have a low impact on our infrastructure, meaning no more 18-wheelers on our roads. This is exactly what we're looking to try to do, so kudos to you all, we are in full support, hopefully, and I just want to thank you for your work.
And Josh, thank you for listening to me. I know I've been in your ear for the last three years talking about this, so thank you so much for taking this task on you and working with our county manager to make sure that we can attract- to make sure that we can attract different types of industries to our county. So we got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion or comments, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am chair, thank you commissioners.
Resolution, building and planning review, Brett Haynes. Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners amending the permitting fee schedule.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Vice Chair and distinguished Board of Commissioners. Come before you tonight, we are requesting to update our permitting fee schedule. The last time our permitting fees were updated was in two thousand and sixteen. Not all the fees were modified at, modified at that time. These minor changes, it comes out to a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars of total fee increases or implementations. However, you'll see later on that this will be instrumental for our department. You'll see where we hit, where we stand currently versus where we were in August of two thousand and twenty-one. I would like to say that I am very proud of our department from where we've come. And this, these permitting fee increases are going to allow us to maintain the qualified staff that allow us to provide this service to our citizens and developers. This slide right here, this is just a basic comparison of some of our cities and surrounding counties. You'll see Henry County is behind the bar currently in, in terms of these fee amounts. Again, we're not looking to reinvent the wheel here. We're not wanting to hit our current citizens, our future citizens or our developers in their pocket. We are just simply wanting to maintain our current level of service and these changes will allow us to do that. These are the actual fees we are going to modify. We have minimum trade permit, minimum building permits, our residential land development permit. You'll see on there currently for residential purposes, we do not charge a plan review fee. So we're wanting to change that and as well as implement an administrative fee. You'll see by the proposed amounts over here, this is where that one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars comes from. That's the total amount of all these changes. Now the sheer number of permits we get is how we, how we get to the revenue that will be referenced on the next slide. And I apologize, that type is pretty small. The important number is down there at the bottom. With just these minor increases, our department can receive approximately four-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars annually just from these minor increases. Again, we don't want to hit the, either the citizens, future citizens or developers in their pockets. We want to simply maintain our qualified staff and these minor changes are going to allow us to do that. And I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Brett. This is, you all, you did an awesome job in putting this together. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
When you put your fees together for our builders or developers and they pay those fees, let's say in two thousand and twenty-three, but they don't start build to two thousand and twenty-six, are there any other fees attached for the late build or do they just get to pay it the one time and that's it?
Say for instance, we have a development plan that's approved this year in two thousand and twenty-three. If the builder does not take, or developer does not take action for a year's time, they actually have to resubmit. So if there is no action, they would resubmit and we would collect that fee again. At that point, we have it currently in our ordinance where if there's no action taken on a permit that's issued for a period six months or longer, the permit is considered null and void. And that, that's not only just from a perspective of changing county ordinances. We also have changing governing codes as well as environmental codes that change seemingly every year. This is what allows us to go back and re-review those plans and make sure they meet not only the county standards, but federal and state standards as well. So they would be subject to additional fees if they paid for a permit now and were to come back a couple of years after not starting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second? No further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries?
Thank you.
What we've been waiting for? Resolution approving the class and compensation study for Henry County employees. If our county manager and whomever else that she has will come forward to present. Is it Callie?
Callie.
From HR?
Yes.
Callie, how you say your last name?
It's Coloccio.
Okay. I won't just call you Callie.
That's what I call her. Callie with a C. So good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and members of the board. You know, this evening it has just been, everything's been moving so quickly. So I love the energy that the board has. I hope we keep that energy. But certainly I understand that there may be questions and we are certainly prepared to answer any questions that you all may have. But it has been a long time coming. I think earlier in March, we did bring forth what we believe to be an initial recommendation for our class and compensation plan. And I know that there were a lot of very important questions that were posed by the board. And so we took a pause and I think the directive given by Madam Chair was to get this back to me in about sixty days. And so we're going to hold to getting this information back to you all. Hopefully each board member had an opportunity to review the PowerPoint and information that I sent out last Thursday to each of the board members. I will tell you, and I'll let Callie get through the presentation, that there is one change. We had some formula issues and so we initially thought that we were going to actually have to increase it by two and a half million. But I'm pleased to report that we're actually decreasing it by two and a half million. So I think with that being said, Commissioner Anglin, you can just make a motion to approve and then we'll be ready to go. So, so seriously, I do know that there were several questions raised by the board and specifically you all wanted to know where were we placing employees, specifically those hard-to-fill positions? And I think Commissioner Thomas said it best to me. I want to make sure that we're compensating those employees who are out on the streets, filling the potholes, fixing the cars and doing all the things that need to be done. And so what you will see in this presentation is the initial recommendation by the consultant. But then also in your package, you should see those highlighted positions in which we did not agree with the initial assessment from the consultants. Myself and Callie spoke with the consultants last week. They agreed with some and in others, they did put an asterisk and just say, hey, based on retention and recruitment, the county would like to enhance the starting pay for those positions. And so this evening, I'm going to allow Callie to go through a very, very quick presentation. We're going to highlight those specific positions, but then we'll wait for any questions that the board may have. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Callie. And Callie is going to get us started in terms of what happened since March twenty-first. Callie? Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, commissioners. My name is Callie Coloccio. I'm an HR generalist in the Department of Human Resources. My main function in HR is classification and compensation. As the county manager stated, I'm going to jump right in with the changes that have been made since we last brought, sorry, brought this to the board in March. So recently what we've been doing is we've been having meetings with cluster leads and department heads to review all of their respective positions and recommended pay grades. We have made no changes to the actual pay scale itself. The only thing that we have done is revisited those pay grades that are hard to fill and created pay parity among like positions and departments. The next slide that we have provided are the classifications in which we did make changes to. Some of these are just as simple as a title change. Those that are highlighted in red are our hard-to-fill positions that we increased the pay grade on. Another thing that we have changed is we have moved away from that class year parity option. And the county manager and a few members of the HR team got together and we created a fair and equitable method to give employees additional credit outside of just bringing them to the new minimum. So if you look at this, you'll notice that this tiered approach kind of mirrors our leave accrual schedule. We have five categories in our leave accrual schedule. Zero to four years, five to nine years, ten to fourteen years, fifteen to nineteen years and twenty-plus years. The way this gives credit is if you have zero to four years of service, you will get credit for your actual years of service. So if you have one year of service, you'll be placed in box one. Two years, you'll be placed in box two. Three years, box three. And four years, box four. If you have five to nine years of service, you will get five years of credit for your service to the county. So you'll be placed in box five. If you have ten to fourteen years of service, you'll get credit for seven years. So you'll be placed in box seven. If you have fifteen to nineteen years of service, you will get credit for ten years of service to the county. So you'll be placed in box ten. And for twenty-plus years, plus-year employees, you'll get credit for fourteen years. So you will be placed in box fourteen. So what this does is it creates kind of pay parity among internal employees. It kind of addresses that comparable employees. The total is about four-point-six million dollars. Every employee will receive an adjustment. It will be an average of eleven-point-four percent. So it won't be across the board, but that is the average. For public safety, it will be a five-point-seven million dollar impact and an average adjustment of ten-point-three percent. The total implementation cost will be about ten-point-three million dollars for an average adjustment of ten-point-nine percent. County manager, do you have anything to add? So Madam Chair, I will yield at this moment for any questions that you all may have. And myself and Ms. Callie hopefully will be able to get those answered for you fairly quickly.
Awesome. I'm going to start with Commissioner Wilson down on the end.
So this is a cleaner version. It's a lot easier to understand. And thank you all for working on that because it was confusing to the majority of the employees and us as well. But the next question, I think, is going to come from all the employees. Where did I get plugged in that and when will I get my raise? So how to explain that process because they're waiting on somebody to tell them how that's going, when they're going to get the raise and how, how y'all going to implement that to each employee?
So our team has been working diligently with our system, Tyler's system today. They actually went through a full training in terms of how do we make this work? I will have to give Callie credit that she worked all weekend trying to make sure that every employee had a letter that will be delivered to them. But beginning tomorrow morning, when the board approves the class and compensation plan tonight, I'm ready to hit send on an email because we will have employee town hall meetings at nine, eleven and one P.M. to go over everything that we've discussed tonight. If there's an employee that wants to know before they leave, how did I get to where I am? How are you crediting my years of service? Our HR team and myself included will sit down with those employees to go over that information. Because July one would be the effective date and that falls in the middle of a pay period, it will be on the first check, the first check, the sec, the first check, it'll be July fourteenth or the second paycheck in July. But it will only be half of your new pay rate because it will be in the middle of a pay period. So what employees have to remember is that we have three paychecks in June. So your check is going to look really nice, but it is not the increase as a result of this. That first paycheck in July will be part of your rate at your old hourly rate versus the new hourly rate. And then that second paycheck in July will be the full amount with your new hourly rate. But every employee will receive a personal action form and a letter that clearly articulates their current pay grade, their current rate of pay, what their new job title, if it changed, their new pay grade and their new rate of pay.
So moving forward, if we have to adjust this pay grade two years from now, is that going to easily be done?
Absolutely. I think this is much easier because what we should be doing is every two years, looking at our pay class and compensation plan to make sure that we are remaining competitive with the market. And I think this will be much easier.
We can do this in-house?
That's a very good point. Point well taken. I think when Callie introduced herself, she said she was an HR generalist and her job was class and compensation. So it sounds like she has some job security.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Robinson?
I watched this online as you all have went through this as, you know, the commissioners. I'm just glad we're here. And just to hear Commissioner Wilson say, this is much clearer version. And then you have someone that can actually provide that is a plus. So I'm just so glad that we're here for the employees because all of this is well-deserved. So kudos to you both for getting us here finally.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anglin, he's the number man.
Yeah. So thank y'all to the cluster leaders and staff for cleaning up the class and comp study because it was a little messy when it came out. So thank you to y'all. Being the money guy, with that being said, saving money is typically looked at as a wonderful thing, but not if it comes at the cost of our valued employees. With that being said, I think most folks will be happy with what we've done. I apologize to those individuals who don't feel like they're getting what they're valued. With that being said, these are not easy decisions. So I do make the motion that we approve the class and comp study.
Lewis?
Yes, first of all, I just want to say thank you because I know I had questions during the last time we had it come up because I wasn't clear on, you know, how people were being classified. Especially, I think a lot of our employees were not clear on the years of service. Also, I think at that time, we had not reached out to all of the employees in the county. Some of them aren't necessarily under county purview, but they are still paid with county funds. And so I just want to say thank you for reaching out to the district attorney's office, the solicitor's office and the court system to make sure that those employees were included as well because they are valued employees as well. With that being said, I think this is, this is an excellent step for us to make. We have some of the best employees in the state of Georgia. And so I want to say thank you to all the people that work for Henry County. I wholeheartedly approve of us giving you all raises. I know, and like I said, you know, we all feel that we should make more than what we make. And so, you know, to Commissioner Anglin's point of view, sometimes this may not be exactly what you were looking for, but I think that this is the fairest thing that we could come up with. And like I say, I do support it. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Chair Real. And let me say thank you, Sherri and your team for what you've done. I know when you presented this to us before, I tore it apart.
You did.
Yes, I did. And I know I criticized it a lot. But my goal was to make sure, just like you did, to make sure that the boots on the ground were getting that raise. And I believe the last time, and I said it to you, that that was not done fairly. That I did not want it locked up in administration and supervisors and managers, but down at the lower tiers so they can feel that they've gotten that raise. So yes, I did tear the other one apart. But look what happened. And I did read it, you know, I read things.
I know.
So I did read, I went down the list that you gave us, not the one here, to see how you broke things up and how you looked at the percentages, which again says someone took the time this time to make sure that we're compensating our employees the best that we can. There was never an op, there was never an opposition to increases. There was an opposition on my behalf as how those increases were going to be issued. And I think this has corrected a lot of that. So I want to thank you so much for that. And thank you for letting me tear the first one apart. My follow-up question is, once we implement this, when will the cost of living saving, I mean, cost of living increase be paired and follow this? What month does that fall?
So the board approved the COLA in our FY twenty-four budget. I believe that this is incorporating just the longevity. But David will have to correct me that we did incorporate the COLA in the budget that was recently approved. He may be walking behind me to say no.
So what I'm trying to determine then, our employees should get the cost of living increase plus this?
David is correcting me. It does not include a COLA. This is just the increase for class and compensation. So there is no COLA included in the overall number, nor is there a COLA included in the FY twenty-four budget. So my apologies, I misspoke. Yes, that is it.
That's what I'm trying to clarify. And I think, again, we've done a splendid job. I hope the employees see that we do want them here. We, I'll... We also have absorbed the full cost of the insurance cost. There was an increase there.
Yes, ma'am.
And making sure that they did not have to pay for that as well. So kudos to you.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
And thank you so much. And with that, I second your motion, Commissioner Anglin, that we pass this.
Sherri, I just want to say thank you to you and HR, all our cluster leaders, and hey, you know, I'm always on board, always will support our employees 100%. So with that, we got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Henry County employees, we love you. Next item on the agenda, planning and zoning, RZ-21-39.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The rezoning request in front of you is for property located at 245 and 375 Locust Road. The property is currently zoned RA, residential agriculture, and the parcel is 215.25 plus or minus acres. And the applicant is requesting a rezoning from RA to R2 sewer for a conservation subdivision. The subject property is highlighted in green on all of the maps and is directly east of Locust Road. The property has a future land use designation of low-density residential, which does support the R2 zoning district. This slide shows nearby subdivisions in the area in relation to this particular request. This slide shows the proposed yield plan specifically for the rezoning with 313 lots. And the next slide shows the actual conservation plan, which is what we would be looking to make a decision on. The applicant is requesting to rezone 215.25 plus or minus acres from RA to R2 sewer for the purpose of a conservation subdivision. The yield plan of the proposed development would allow a maximum of 349 lots. However, the developer is only showing 313 lots designed as a conventional R2 subdivision with a net density of 1.8 dwelling units per acre. A request for a conditional use, CU 2110, was approved by the zoning advisory board on March 10, 2022. As a conservation subdivision, the developers are requesting 297 lots with varying lot sizes of 10,890 square feet for Pod A, which would be age-restricted, 12,000 square feet for Pod B, and 15,000 square feet for Pod C. Conservation subdivisions require increased undisturbed or enhanced buffers around the perimeter of the property and increased open green space. There are two separate amenity areas, one for the age-restricted pod, which includes pickleball courts, a raised garden, a clubhouse, and a dog park, while the traditional family section of the development includes a clubhouse with a pool, playgrounds, picnic areas, disc golf areas, and paved golf cart paths with open green space. So with that being said, here are some of the building plans that were submitted by the developer. The age-restricted lots specifically have standards and conditions to truly be age-restricted and to make these houses as safe as possible for seniors. And these are just a few examples of the housing plans that were submitted. A part of their recommended conditions is that they go through an architectural review board with staff and where we'll be able to lay our eyes on all of the plans that are submitted so that we can make sure they're consistent with what's being presented. So staff is recommending approval of this request with 31 conditions in your exhibit book, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the conditions or the development as a whole. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, and we're going to do the public hearing first. If there are persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, please come forward. You have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the Board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Steve Moore with Moore Bass Consulting, 1350 Keys Ferry Court in McDonough, Georgia, here tonight representing DRB in this, which, okay. Okay, gotcha. This is the pointer. Okay. So Brighton is what this subdivision is proposed to be called. Kamal does such a good job that he makes my job really easy because I don't have to say much, but, except I don't have to get this thing to work. Just click down on the, it works. Just click down. Okay, scroll. All right. So Kamal, again, 215 acres. This is an aerial show in the site, located just south of Highway 42, east of Locust Road. Our request was approved for a conditional use to allow this to be developed as a conservation subdivision, and we feel like we've done a good job of kind of honoring the natural features of this site and following the heart and intent of the conservation subdivision ordinance, which does require a lot of items in addition to a minimum of 40% open space and increased buffers. But this plan does yield 297 lots, primarily broken up into three pods. And these are, well, let me talk about the entrances first. We have three entrances proposed to this community. There's two entrances off of Locust Road, one of which will be a gated entrance to serve the active adult section. Then there's another entrance here off of Waymouth Drive that would also be gated accessing the, the active adult section. And this is just a map to try to communicate what the boundaries of that active adult community consists of. So again, these are 75, or 70-foot wide lots. There's 131 proposed in this, roughly 44% of the total number of lots that is intended to be age-restricted active adult. And then, as Kamal showed earlier, those are the proposed elevations for those homes, some samples. And this is kind of in the back section here, adjacent to this, this creek area, is where we have the next bigger lots, which are 80-foot lots. There's 99 of those. And again, this central roundabout here kind of provides an option for people to have, kind of to separate those three different product types. The third, and then these are the 80-foot building products. Then the third residential use is the 100-foot lots. These are the, obviously, the largest lots. The smallest lot size you can do under a conservation subdivision is a 75-foot wide lot. So these are much larger than the minimum that's allowed. And these are intended to have the bigger houses, which are, you can see on these elevations are all side entry garages because they can fit on a 100-foot wide lot. You can make the, make the driveways work. There are three separate amenity areas proposed within the community. The kind of central amenity right by this roundabout, which will have the fire pits, the grilling area, pool, clubhouse, playground, and then this walking trail that runs behind it. And then there is an act, a separate active adult amenity close to the gated entrance that will access the active adult section, which would have a pickleball courts, as Kamal mentioned. Again, the clubhouse, the raised community garden, and those types of amenities there. And then there's a third amenity on the far east side of the property, across the creek here, that will have a small pavilion area, area for golf cart parking, and then some walking trails that will access through the, through the nature areas there, providing just more passive recreation opportunities. And then all of those amenities are connected throughout this subdivision, each one of those three amenities, through this open space network. There is a trail, golf cart trail, that runs here that connects the active adult section to the central amenity, which is going to be catered more to families. But again, through collaboration with staff and, and the development team, was identified that somebody's, you know, somebody who lives in the active adult section, their grandkids might come over for a weekend, and they want to have the ability to take them to the, to the swimming pool or to the playground. So we provided an access route that makes it easy for them to, to get there. So that's, that's kind of the, the plan. Again, this, this thing wasn't born overnight. There was, we filed the zoning application in October of 2021. And we've gone through community meetings, we've gone through the zoning advisory board, we've gone through multiple meetings with the applicant, with staff, trying to come up and fine-tune this thing down to where it's a, it's a plan that we all can be proud of and think that makes sense. And I feel like we're, we're there now. The, just to kind of highlight the conditions, we're in agreeance with all the 31 conditions that are proposed by staff. There's probably more than that if you take all the A, Bs, and Cs under each one, there's probably more like 50 conditions. But again, that's a, that's a product of a lot of hard work to try to fine-tune this thing down. Just to give you an idea on price point, the active adult section, those homes are planned to start in the 400s. The 50, or the Pods B and C, which are the 80s and the 90-foot lots, will be in the $5,000 to $650,000 range. That was one thing I failed to mention earlier. So with that, I think I'll leave it there and save time for any additional questions or, or I'm happy to, whenever the time's right, I'm happy to answer your questions. Thank you so much.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of the development? Stephanie, reset the clock. Is there anyone here that wish to speak in opposition of this development? Please come forward. Okay, here and none. Commissioner Wilson, this is in your.
Oh. I'm just wondering, this is my first meeting, so would that open to being a manager?
She'll need to come to the podium.
Ma'am, are you, do you, do you want to speak in opposition of this?
Yes.
Okay, then you need to come forward and state your name. State your name and address.
Thank you so much. My name is Georgia Gordon Nab, and I do live in Locust Grove. I live off of Locust Road. And the road is only two lanes. Since I moved into the subdivision there on Colter Woods Drive, there was, you know, no mention to any of this, but the community was very small because our subdivision is only like 30 houses, one way in, one way out. It appealed to us very much. But since that has occurred and other subdivisions have come along, Locust Road has nothing but potholes and nobody is fixing them. If they do, they do a little tap to it. When it rains, two weeks later, you've got huge potholes. So if we're going to add a subdivision like that off of Locust Road, where are we going to go? We won't be able to even move off of Locust Grove to get to Highway 42. There, I mean, we're just, I mean, that is huge for a little bitty place that Locust Grove is. That's huge. And I can't even imagine all of that being there. I mean, it's beautiful, don't misunderstand me, but that's not enough room for you to even get out. I live six miles from Walmart. Some of the times, it takes me 20 minutes to get there. What's going to happen then? How are we going to move? That's my concern. There's not enough room for us to move around in that subdivision, in that area, once that comes up. That's my personal opinion. I live there, off of Locust Road, and I travel it every day. You multiply each house that's there by at least four to five cars being at each home. We have two because it's just two adults. So we have two. Everybody in our little, small community has two to three cars. That's a lot right there. So what will that bring in for us to be able to move? It's a beautiful thought. I like it, but not for the little Locust Grove where we live. Thank you for listening to me.
Is there anyone else who wish to come to speak in opposition? Here and none. Commissioner Wilson, I will turn it over to you because this is your commission district. And I don't know if you'd like for Steve Moore to come back up to, for him to answer any questions or for Kamal to answer any questions for you.
In place. I want to thank Kamal and staff, Steve Moore and his staff, the developer. We've been working at this since 2021. They wanted to bring something to Locust Grove and said, what do you want to see? So I told them, this is what we're going to have. We want age-restricted. And Kamal, if you would, tell us, tell everyone, viewers, and the difference between a restricted and targeted.
So age-restricted is in the protected covenants, the HOA and developer have to maintain that you have to be 55 years or older to purchase a home. Age-targeted is really just advertising.
Suggest.
A suggest, a strong suggestion. So restricted gives us a little bit more teeth to make the intent true.
So with all that, in, in the age-restricted community, we gated it. We have them golf cart paths and we have them pickleball courts put in, even in the floor plans. We put floor plans out that seniors would be, would be drawn to. We've got a couple of, is it a two-bedroom, a two-bedroom plan?
Yes, sir. On the main floor.
It's a two-master bedroom plan that they offer with a, with covered back porches, with, you've got finished bonus rooms, that type thing. That's something that we typically don't see in Henry County. So going through all this, since October 21, we have come to these, to these conditions, and I think everybody's on board with. So I think it's going to be a nice community. It's going to be, the lady was talking about the traffic, where there's going to be 131 lots inside the gates with seniors. So them, seniors don't travel every single day. They, they may, they, like my house, we travel together. So yes, I do fall under the senior category.
Is there a traffic impact study that's going to be done? And so whatever that traffic impact study says will bring back what improvements will need to be done in that area?
Yes, ma'am. So the size of this development and by condition, a traffic impact study is required. Henry County DOT, back when we first started evaluating this property, they did think that this road could handle it with improvements, which are through the developer's expense. So yes, they'll have to do a traffic impact study, and yes, they'll have to make any road improvements that are necessary because of.
So with that, I just want to say I, I want to make a motion to approve this rezoning.
County Manager, did you have a comment?
Yes, on condition number 25, and this is for Commissioner Wilson, can we add, as approved or determined by the Henry County Building Department, we've had some issues, not with this particular development specifically for undisturbed buffers and landscaping, we need to make sure that we have a plan approved prior to them starting any work. So I just want to add that one sentence to the end of that condition, please.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so can you repeat that condition again, Sherri?
Yes, ma'am. As determined and approved by the Henry County Building Department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's condition 25?
25.
Okay. So Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Yes, with the change of.
Is there a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is RZ-22-23. Xavier Knight of McDonough requests a rezoning RA from residential ag to R2 single-family residence. And this is in District Four.
Good evening, Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The item before you is for property located on the west side of Mosley Road and adjacent to the Bella Landing subdivision. The property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural. Here is an aerial map. an aerial map of the surrounding area. We see to the north, northwest, we see the intersection of 138 and Hemp Hill Road. To the east is 155 in the Cali Town area. The future land use map designation for this subject property is low-density residential that would support up to two dwelling units per net acre. Here is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant, which indicates a simple lot division for the creation of three lots. With this, with these three lots, the density would be approximately 1.1 dwelling units per acre, I'm sorry, per net acre. And it does, the future land use map designation does support the rezoning request. As I mentioned, the rezoning request is from RA Residential Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residence for lots on septic, three lots more specifically. It is intended to be served by that septic system and would meet the R2 development standards. The, though the three lots are close enough to tie into sewer, the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority would not require sewer tie-in, given that it's not a development, it's just that lot division. On February 9, 2023, the zoning advisory board did recommend approval of the applicant's request to rezone the property from RA to R2 on septic with conditions. Planning staff has since modified that conditions list. That final list is before you. And it does include language requiring foresides brick with accent material, two-car garage, all homes to be built on site, and driveways to be a turnaround or circular driveways. That's so, that is intended to prevent and avoid collisions when a resident leaves the driveway onto Mosley Road. There is also the requirement for a 10-foot undisturbed buffer, which is to be, remain on the rear of the property, rear of each parcel, to provide that buffer between this, these lots and the Bella Landing subdivision. And I think I'm probably going to anticipate the commissioner, I'm sorry, Sheri's comments, undisturbed buffer shall remain on the rear of each lot as determined and approved by the building department. I think that is one change that I would like to quickly add. But other than that, that is my presentation. Thank you so much. And I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, so this is not a public hearing. We've already held a public hearing with regards to this. This is in Commission District 4. This is Commissioner Thomas's district. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will say that I have worked with the planning and zoning department on this issue. We've had extensive conversation about how and what should be done in this area. We have also had conversation with the applicant as well. I think they have put together, and I believe, strong restrictions as to what should take place. We have, hate to say it like this, but beat this dead horse to death. We have done just that, and they have come up with a very good plan. And I will make the recommendation tonight that this be approved based upon the presentation made.
So you made a motion, making a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Lewis. Is there any further discussion? Here in none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. ULDC Amendment -23-01, this is a public hearing, an ordinance by Henry County to amend the Unified Land Development Code of Henry County ordinance to provide for new and amended definitions regulating standards for multifamily residential developments and for other purposes countywide.
Good evening once more. This ULDC amendment is to, as mentioned, address multifamily development standards, more specifically to add multifamily development standards to our code. A 12-month moratorium for all new multifamily developments was enacted on January 4, 2023, and was put into effect to allow staff adequate time to address some concerns with multifamily and to craft some new language, which of course this amendment addresses. The proposed amendment would establish those minimum standards for multifamily developments. Any additional requirements would be able to be addressed through the rezoning process with adequate condition, conditions. The proposed amendments specifically are to Chapter 2 development standards for the zoning districts, for, for coupled zoning districts, addition to Chapter 4 for these multifamily standards, and a few added definitions to support this, this amendment. So with, quickly highlighting this amendment, we have updated the new development standards for townhome developments, horizontal multifamily, and apartment and condominiums. This amendment features a tiered approach to amenities based on a number of units for each development. We have landscaping and science standards, which requires a 50-foot enhanced landscape strip and/or adequate undisturbed buffer along all exterior streets, subject to Henry County planning and zoning approval prior to the issuance of an LDP land disturbance permit. It does also allow flexibility for unique products with staff oversight. On the screen here, we have the development standards for townhomes. This, one thing that I wanted to quickly note here is that with this amendment, we would allow, we would allow for flexibility and allow for front entry and rear entry garages. Quickly highlighting some notes, we have, this, this amendment requires standards regarding building materials for all elevations, limits the number of repeating elevations within a unit set, a requirement that all rental communities be gated, amenities, as I mentioned prior, is dependent on the number of units that's provided. Here are a couple just quick images of some townhome developments that hopefully we might be able to see in the future. Here for horizontal multifamily, this is for condos and apartments. It's, it's a little bit different from our next section for condos and apartments, specifically a little bit different. These are the development standards. A minimum heated floor area, for example, of 1,200, just a minimum. And when it comes time for rezoning, we can always increase that if need be. Very similar to townhomes, we have language for appearance standards, tiered approach to amenities, limitations on repeating elevations, was apartments, not apartments, I'm sorry, amenities here, I quickly want to address. We have playgrounds, cabana and clubhouse space, resorts via pool, fitness facility, walking trails, and permanent trash bins to avoid littering, to promote, you know, removing trash in the trash bin. Also guest parking at a rate of one space per every four units. Some, some quick examples of what we mean by this horizontal multifamily. For apartments and condominiums, development standards real quick, just based on heated square footage, based on the number of bedrooms. Once more, appearance standards for building materials, amenities shall be gated. These apartment condominium developments shall be gated as per this ordinance amendment. All developments shall have two entrances, meeting building and life safety codes, security cameras to be registered with the Henry County real-time crime center. Again, some quick examples. So going back to the changes to Chapter 2, this is an example of what the changes I, that's in this amendment. Really, it's just to reference this new Chapter 4 section regarding multifamily standards. With this, staff does recommend approval of the proposed amendment to the ULDC, and as well as recommending to cast a vote to end the multifamily moratorium, ordinance number 23-2. That is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
So yes, I do have some questions. How many other properties that we have, Kamal, you and I had this discussion, I need to know what we're looking at with regards to, that are already currently zoned for multifamily?
So there are a few properties within Old Highway 3 and 1941 that are currently zoned for multifamily, that have been zoned that for, for several decades, certainly before the 2009 ULDC. There's only a handful of those, and Kamal, if you could share that. Yep, so on the left side, those, those parcels there, that's along 1941, a little bit top right is that Old Highway 3. Again, these were put in, these were zoned for multifamily back in the day. More specifically, it's my understanding that this zoning for multifamily essentially allowed for smaller lots, these lots, smaller lots for single-family homes. There was a kind of a, what I anticipated as being a translation error almost between the old code and the new code. But these are the few properties in Henry County zoned multifamily, no zoning conditions. With this amendment, if they were to develop for multifamily, they would need to meet these new standards.
Okay, so they would have to meet the new standards that we're putting in place?
That is correct.
Okay. Commissioner, I'm going to just go down. Commissioner Wilson, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Okay. Commissioner Robinson? Commissioner Angler?
No, I'll pass. I got a question, but I can't get it out.
Okay, all right. I'll let you think about it for a minute. Commissioner Lewis?
So I do have a couple of questions. So you highlighted these three properties, and they're, they're all within District 5. So these are properties that are already zoned multifamily, who would have to abide by the new code if they do decide to build?
Correct.
Okay. But with this new ordinance, we still will have the process whereby developers could try to rezone other pieces of property within the counties. I don't, I don't want people to think that these are the only three pieces of property left in the county that could potentially be multifamily. Okay?
Correct, yes.
All right.
But even if that was to come before us, we don't have to rezon it?
Correct. These properties would not have to-
These properties are already, these properties are already zoned multifamily.
That's correct.
So without this ordinance, they can build whatever they want to build.
That's correct.
And we have no say.
And the way we built the code was to have some level of flexibility. Henry County is a large county landmass-wise, and each district is different, and each commissioner may want to see different things. Some commissioners don't want to see anything multifamily. So with that being said, we drafted it with flexibility and purpose to where, other than these three, every other new request is going to have to come before the board, is going to have to be vetted. And you can always increase the standards or decrease the standards, but that flexibility was built in so that we don't lock ourselves into walls when new requests do come.
So this gives us a baseline and flexibility?
Right now, we have nothing in the code, no baseline.
Right. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Angler?
So we know we've been working on the future land use map that's going to be approved in October. Would it be prudent for us to wait till we see what the future land use map looks like before we approve this and remove the moratorium?
So that's a good question. I think that when this moratorium was enacted, the goal was staff, bring us something back in six months so that we can have standards. Would it be prudent? Yes. Do I expect the future land use map to change high-density and mixed-use wise that much? No, I don't. Not between now and October.
Thank you, Kamal.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you looking for a motion?
No. This is a public hearing. And persons wish to speak in favor of the request, please come forward.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, those that wish to speak in opposition of the request, please come forward. Are you coming to speak in opposition?
More just commenting versus opposition.
Okay, well, okay. Well, come, come and speak in favor then.
Well-
Come and speak middle of the road. Okay.
I like the way that, that sounds better. Well, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment today on the Henry County Multifamily Design Standards. My name is Joseph Santorum, the Director of Policy and Going Affairs with the Council for Quality Growth. The Council for Quality Growth is a non-profit trade association representing builders, developers, contractors, engineers, really across the development spectrum, you know, for quality growth and development in both the metro Atlanta and here in Henry County. So we, I first want to start off by saying that we appreciate the opportunity to review the multifamily design standards back in March, when they initially sent out the draft to the various stakeholders, as well as the final draft version in June. I just want to say that we did facilitate and get feedback from our membership and provided a letter to staff both on March 7, as well as on June 2, a follow-up letter as well. And, and obviously, we recognize that Henry County has experienced a rapid increase in, in multifamily development over the last decade and is managing the growth here in the county. And, you know, we do firmly believe that it's important to find a balance when you're, you know, between regulations that affect how does housing affordability, and at the same time, you know, achieve the conditions, the county's desired quality developments. I do want to say that we appreciate staff working with us as well as other stakeholders towards a compromise ordinance. It is our understanding the board is looking to move this forward in the adoption process to lift the 12-month moratorium that was just discussed. I won't get any specifics today, I'll spare you all of that. But I just want to highlight just a few things in the last letter we sent on June 2. And just, you know, respectfully asked, you know, for more flexibility and options in just a few key areas, and happy to get with any Board of Commissioners or staff offline after this. But, you know, just looking specifically at the minimum heated floor area, you know, I think that is a little bit greater than some other standards in, in some other Georgia municipalities in the metro region, which asks a little bit more flexibility and options there. Secondly, on the facade materials, you know, just asking for a little bit more flexibility on that front as well. And specifically, the, the proposed roofline offset seemed to be pretty, pretty significantly greater than most standards that we've talked with other developers around the region that are currently using. So just wanted to point that out for the group today. And then, you know, just as it relates to amenities, you know, I think having a more flexible, diverse list of options for, for y'all to, to consider and for developers to consider as they're developing a site. So just wanted to point out a few things. I'm happy to share, I have a few copies of some of our letters if anybody's interested. But with that, just want to say that, you know, we're here as a resource of the county and look forward to being a resource in the future. And thank you again. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I appreciate your comments. So I'd like to see if we can get a motion from the board to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Are those that oppose? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Chair Harrell, I want, would like to add, now that the ULDC has been amended, will the board entertain a motion to lift the moratorium?
I thought that was part of what his presentation was.
It wasn't part of the actual resolution.
Do I have to do that separate? Is that separate?
Yeah, it would be separate.
Okay, all right, okay. So that's just to pass the, the ordinance, okay.
I'm sorry, you didn't have to.
Okay, I apologize. I didn't see him present.
So they must have updated it. My apologies. I'm sorry. Never mind.
So what does that do for the next item on the agenda?
So considering there is no more moratorium, the next item was an appeal to the moratorium. I don't think it's necessary anymore. So staff would like to withdraw that case if it is okay with that. okay with the applicant.
We would like to still proceed to present our portion of the appeal. So my name is Andrea Pearson.
So let me say this. You are going to present an appeal that doesn't matter?
So just to clarify, our appeal is with respect to an exception to the moratorium due to the vested rights for a multifamily development, which includes our request and belief that we are entitled to vested rights to proceed under the rules that were in place prior to the rules that were just enacted. So it's-
So the moratorium has been lifted. So what is your appeal?
The, the appeal is for our vested rights to proceed under the rules that were previously in place. So the county's prior version of the code, not the version that was just enacted by the county. So-
That's a different appeal. That's not what they're here for today.
Which we-
You're here to appeal the moratorium.
So our appeal is based on our vested rights to proceed with multifamily development, which we have expressly included in the record, the request to proceed under the old rules.
Okay, but the moratorium has been lifted, so the old rule doesn't apply?
Well, we believe due to-
I don't believe that it does.
Well, we would like the opportunity to present our case.
So I'm gonna let our county attorney make that decision.
To speak with the Planning and Zoning-
Okay, all right, yeah. You need to, okay, she'll speak with you to the side.
Madam Chair, may I take about a ten-minute recess?
Okay, all right. Let's take a break.
Chair Harrell, thank you. We think that, I've discussed it with Planning and Zoning, and we're gonna go ahead and let them present their appeal after, I believe they have some old standards that they want to comply with or something along that line. So we'll, that they're vested under the old rules. So with that being said or what have you, we'll go forward. We'll let them go forward with their appeal.
Okay, so what do they have? Ten minutes or something to present? Stephanie? Okay.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chair. My name is, excuse me, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board members and citizens of Henry County. You got me? Okay, cool. Thank you. TPA Residential, LLC of Atlanta, requests an appeal to the moratorium for the subject property on North Bridges Road. And I'll display that here in a second. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. So the subject property here is highlighted here in green. The subject property was rezoned from C three Highway Commercial to MU Mixed Use on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, by the Henry County Board of Commissioners for the purpose of a mixed, mixed multifamily and commercial development. On January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners did enact a moratorium for all applications for multifamily residential developments for a period of twelve months. The moratorium states that no application for any development permits pertaining to multifamily residential developments are to be accepted by the county departments during this period. Additionally, the moratorium specifies that a property owner may take a claim for vesting and the granting of an exemption. In such events, the property owner shall submit a written application, include verified supporting data, documents and facts, and request a review by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. The developer has completed the requirements for the DRI process through ARC and have their recommendations and strategies to address the regional impact the development would have on the metro area. Staff did recommend approval, proceeding for the appeal based on the new, on the moratorium, and would allow the applicant to proceed with permitting process for the mixed-use commercial and multifamily residential development. And I'll answer any questions you guys may have.
I have no questions. Let the applicant come forward. They got ten minutes. Okay, people, you have ten minutes. Okay, Stephanie, start the clock. The ten minutes is clocking, is ticking off.
I apologize to keep you all waiting. I understand it's kind of things happening at the last moment, but we would like to request to table for a month to consider how the new ordinance impacts our appeal. We believe we, so that is our current request, is to table to the next meeting.
Okay, staff?
So it's up to you guys. If you are willing to honor their request, that's, that is your, your right. But I would, I would recommend that we do it for the second meeting in July though.
Well, what I wanted to say is to the applicant, we have had some initial meetings with some of their representatives, and whether we work with the old or the new, whatever is being constructed there, there will be stipulations put on it. Because we are going forward with Henry County. We're definitely not going backwards. So do consider that, whatever you're presenting to us as a board. We're looking to go forward. These are new plans that they have put before us, and they've worked very hard to make sure they upgrade the building standards in Henry County. I'm looking to incorporate them in every bill that comes before me in District Four. So please consider that. I don't mind tabling this. I don't mind you bringing it back to us. But just remember, we are looking to go forward. So-
Chair Harrell?
With that stated, I make a motion that we table this to give applicant time to work with our Planning and Zoning Department for a complete presentation, and I would definitely be meeting with, with them as well.
Okay, so I got a motion. Can I get a second? To table? Got a, got a- Motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Those that oppose, I abstain.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public comments. Do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
No ma'am.
Okay. Upcoming meeting events, transportation, town hall meetings will continue from six to seven thirty P M. On June twenty-seventh, we will be at the Carriage House at Nash Farms. And on June twenty-ninth, we will be at Merrill, Merrill Manders Event Center in Stockbridge. July sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, which is a Thursday, will be our regular scheduled nine A M. Board meeting due to the July fourth holiday. If all hearts and minds are clear, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and everyone have a great evening.